I'm not sure. In Charlotte town. But I didn't get a copy.
No worries. Don't worry about it. Just know we have it on.
Okay, we should be streaming, so someone wants to...
All right. It's seven o'clock. We'll call and meet later. For the Intercept Service Board for Tuesday, February 25th, 2025. Too bad tonight. First thing I want to do is Bill Tebow. You know, Bill Tebow passed away this week. Bill was a long, long time resident of the town. An remarkable person. And the governor of the state actually wrote a proclamation, which I'm going to read. State of New Hampshire by Her Excellency Kelly Ayotte, Governor, proclamation in the year of our Lord 2025, naming February 25th, 2025 as William Bill Tebow Day. Whereas William Tebow dedicated his life to service first as a submariner in the United States Navy, then as a highly skilled professional at the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard, and later as a devoted volunteer preserving and sharing the rich history of the shipyard and its legacy. And whereas Mr. Tebow's remarkable career began in 1944 as an electrical trainee at the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard while still a student at Portsmouth High School, launching a lifelong commitment to submarine operations, naval history, and mentorship. And whereas his service in the United States Navy took him from the Pacific Theater aboard the USS Sea Owl during World War II to the USS XU-2513, a German U-boat acquired by the United States, making him one of the few American submariners qualified to serve aboard both US and enemy submarines. And whereas after his military service, Mr. Tebow continued his contributions at the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard, serving in multiple roles, including electrician, production specialist, and division head in the technical branch, before retiring in 1982, though his impact and presence at the shipyard continued well beyond his formal career. And whereas Mr. Tebow's deep commitment to history and education enriched the lives of countless individuals where he shared firsthand accounts of naval service, submarine operations, and shipyard innovation with sailors, historians, and visitors alike. And whereas beyond his contributions to the shipyard, Mr. Tebow serves this community as a leader in veterans organizations, including his tenure as state commander for Maine and New Hampshire for the US submarine veterans of World War II, and as an officer in the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard Historical Foundation. And whereas his legacy extends to generations of his family as a father, grandfather, great-grandfather, and great-great-grandfather, instilling in them the values of dedication, perseverance, and service. Now therefore, I, Kelly Ayotte, Governor of the state of New Hampshire, do hereby proclaim February 25th, 2025 as William Tebow Day for his extraordinary contributions to the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard, the state of New Hampshire, and the nation, recognizing his unparalleled commitment to naval service, historical preservation, and community leadership. On behalf of the people of New Hampshire, I extend my deepest appreciation for his service, his dedication, and his lifelong efforts to preserve our shared history and inspire future generations. In testimony thereof, I appear to set my hand and cause the seal of the state of New Hampshire to be affixed this 25th day of February, 2025. Kelly Ayotte, Governor. I think anybody who ever met Bill came away knowing how remarkable a person he was. Certainly, his commitment to the shipyard is well-known. His commitment to this town and the history of this town was legendary. He'll be missed here in Newfield, so... All right, any other comments about this on Bill Tebow Day? All right, we'll get down to the regular business. First up, list of mailbox damage. So Art McLeary on Deer Trees sent a letter requesting reimbursement for having his mailbox clipped twice. Any questions about this comment or concerns?
Yeah, it was far enough, so the sip pack was good.
Yeah, I went and looked at it as well, so I... I'll make a motion to...
Of course.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. All right, Art, you get your money. All right, that was an easy one. We have an application for... I know I'm jumping around here, just going what's affirmative. An application for residential in a commercial or industrial zone. This is for the victims who live down on Route 108. They apply for this every year, they have to because they have a residence in an industrial zone. They've owned the property for quite some time. Any questions about the application? No? I'll make a motion to approve the request. So all in favor? Aye. Aye. Thank you. Let me get some signatures on this. We have a town hall rental agreement from Catherine Karnowski. She wants to do an event on March 9th. Everything seems in order. We've got the insurance information. Any questions anybody has about this? I'll make a motion to approve the rental agreement for Catherine Karnowski for March 9th, 2025. Second by Mark. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Fire wardens. So Keisha sent this around. The appointments are on the back of the form for the fire ward and deputy fire ward. Fire ward would be Ray Buxton. And then Ray was retired.
I'll show you some stuff that probably out of all of them.
Oh, on Ray?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have deputies, so Jeff Einstrom, Tom Connor, Jeff Buxton, and Scott Buxton. Is that correct?
No, probably the second.
Okay. All right. And by the way, I have no problem making Ray the warden and just changing it on a later date if he's not. Great.
I'm not letting him get off that easy.
Any questions about the fire warden appointments? You're good. All right, I'll make a motion to approve the list of fire warden and deputy fire warden appointments. So all in favor? Aye. Thank you. All right, so before we get into the discussion, I'm gonna try to get through the rest of the... Stuff clear here. You want to talk about the abandoned vehicle?
Roger. On candidates that I was approached by, one of the residents of the town asked me about the car that's been abandoned out on Werewode Avenue. Been there about four years.
Who knew that?
Number four. Oh, I thought you said four.
Well, if it was four years, it's probably pretty valuable at this point.
You can just be a part of that, honestly, it's all...
So what we did is we checked on the... I went down, we got the VIN number and plate number, and the plate expired at 19. We found out the registered owner, but we did a little research there. It's like Cruzex Garage. And basically, I drafted a letter, 30 days or a little more than that, end of March, 31 March, if they were moved. If not, it will be towed. Owner of record will be responsible for all costs, including the towing and storage. And concurrently, we can also kill three birds with one stone and get those two vehicles out of 399.
399, yeah.
So we'll plan on 31 March, if they're not moved, getting the Yak back to the house.
Great.
So I drafted a letter, if you guys are good with that?
Yeah, I'm good with the letter. Do you have any questions about that?
So change the heads over to the front.
Yep. Correct me if I'm wrong, but Cruzex deals with all the title and everything, don't they?
That's all. Once we say, pick it up, he picks it up.
We never take title, I'm responsible.
Responsibility, no liability.
Perfect. Great, so you'll get that?
Yep.
Perfect.
All set, I'll thank you.
Do you want to... I know we have candidate, I may be feel you. Did you want to make mention of anything on that? I mean, I know that we sent an email today to mention.
Streaming in town?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So streaming was cut off at, what was it? 16, 18 minutes?
Yes, Catherine.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know if the streaming was cut off, but the recording, I don't know if the streaming actually cut off.
Well, Sues says you can't access it.
Right, so it's possible that everyone who watched the streaming saw everybody. But then the recording, it's like it cut off at 18 minutes, 18 seconds.
So for whatever reason, if it's the card that was... If the card was half full, and then maybe it records and then dumps into the server, I have no idea.
It was deleted, I was told.
Roger, please, Keisha.
I said, I believe I deleted a lot of the older files recently, so I don't have any of these files. So I'm not sure.
But at Moby's request, wanted to have recordings again of the candidates that were cut off, so...
I think it'd be appropriate to have them, give them the opportunity to have a recording as visible with a note being sent out, via email or residents of the town, so they can access it and see what's going on.
Sure.
The other point on that is, we're already in the 2025 budget. We're spending money with 2025. I don't believe in Michael Becknapp, or correct me if I'm wrong on this, we need to wait until after the election.
No.
We look forward to giving the skirt away. It's something we've been working on for over a year.
No, given the amounts of money that you're talking about, it should be easily... I mean, even if the operating budget fails to equal budget... We won't cover it, but it will be manageable in the context of the overall budget, so if you spend the money now, you should be fine.
So if we sign off on that, you know, I'll make sure that we have... At least we have some equipment that we can consider, and then next go around, we'll sign off on it.
Perfect. Great. All right, any other questions on that one? So let's get to the big one on the agenda, which is the draft agreement for intercept services. So just to make sure I understand it, Moby, because you are the... I'll point on this. The goal here is trying to get this done, obviously about the end, certainly for the end of this month, presumably, you know, sooner, in terms of finalizing the language in this, correct?
So, you know.
Okay.
So what we got, Jeff, I should jump in here in a second. So what we got is initial draft that we received from Plastow as part of terms and conditions of the contract. During due diligence, I sent this to Durbin's office. I received the response from attorney that he had signed to it. And as I read through it, 99.9% of his issues in the contract were structural issues in the way it was drafted, formatted, and templated. And we kind of had a conversation, that's kind of the chaff here in this situation. We're dealing, you know, timeline, dealing with it as of 31 March. And the fact is, we need to get this up and running. He was concerned that it's lenient, he didn't understand the terms and conditions of the contract.
Okay.
And I explained to him, this is a subject matter expertise contract, and there's plenty of folks that will be familiar with this as such. Then Jeff Ford, as we asked like two or three days ago, the updated version, 99.9% of those issues, except for the formatting, which Durbin's office had a problem with, are addressed in this. I guess the only question, and I love you, acknowledge Jeff, is when they're coming up with the final contract?
There's so many issues right now with the document deal with 13 different lawyers and 13 different towns.
I don't blame them for that.
It's got to come out, I think, you know, mine is pretty close to what...
This one?
There, well, pretty close to the... Dr. Grant, pretty close to the final one with the attorney for Plastow.
This is...
Okay, all right, that one's in. And I think that's the way you're going to find it for this year's contract. Maybe we'll find it, but as they're saying, we cannot agree.
No, no, no.
They all want to run up the cost, that's what they want to do.
Here's my question, so... I don't want to run stuff by the lawyer, okay? Because I don't want to do that. There are a couple issues here that I noticed that maybe, maybe just in the language that I'm looking at is, it's more clarification than any kind of serious change. I can understand if they don't want it, but if they do, is there a process here? Should I just give my comments to you?
Why would you do that?
Okay. I mean, it's, for example, I'll give you, you know, on the first page on staffing, it says, Plastow shall employ make available, as an intercept clinician, three paramedics to be available. Should that be at least three? Because at some point, this contract may still be valid many years from now. And there may be a need for more than three. It's stuff like that.
Yeah, I can see, I would say a minimum. I can see what you want that minimum.
Right. It's little things like that that isn't changing the nature of the contract, but I think is clarifying a few things here that I think are important. And the other question I have, which is, there is no mention here about how any of these contracts get amended. At all. Now, if the argument is, these are just going to be year-to-year contracts, so there will be no amendments? And I don't want to drag this up, trust me. I have no intention of that, but I... They may want to put some language in here that talks about, you know, is it amended by a majority of the towns? Is it amended by Plastow? Does it have to be unanimous? Because we all know that this is going to change year to year, depending on who's in it, where the vehicles are located, and everything else. So they may want to add some kind of provision in there that just at least alludes to the idea of, you know, if this... How would this might get amended? And if it does get amended, can somebody basically say, "I'm out"?
Well, the ability to exit is clearly defined within the terms of the contract.
Yes, yeah, but if they suddenly amend this, I don't want to have to stick around for another 90 days. These are required in contracts. So, and so that's, that's the only major one. The other ones, I think, are more clarification that I think are worth just having a conversation with them. If they don't want to go do it, they don't want to do it, I get it. But it may be worthwhile, so I'll draw this up tomorrow. And I'll send you my list, and then I'll pull out and use it to handle.
Jeff, where are you at, can I ask?
Okay.
Jeff, where are you at on this?
Where am I at?
Yeah, you're doing it.
I think we have no choice. I'm going to support it. I mean, Mike brings up some viewpoints, I'm absolutely supportive. We need to do it. All right, we don't want to rate, we're going so high this year. And I would see that. How many calls do you think this year? 30 calls, we gotta get it. I think we're already at 56.
Medical?
Medical. Oh, total medical, five on the tongue. We had a small day last fall, that already...
Fall time shift?
We did transport it once, but...
I mean, this is not optional.
No, no, I think, you know, in the city, I think there's going to be more, you know, like, I was hoping to have next year's contract, oh, like, maybe some of this year, so if you could, you know, really take a look at it next year, there may be some repair costs and stuff like that. You know. They know they have to make some adjustments.
But I would agree with you, Chief. I... Even in this form, I'd... I'd still sign it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I think there are some issues that need to be addressed, whether we sign it now, address it later, or we address it now and then sign it. I don't think it matters, but I think this needs to be done.
Yeah, I hope you don't take it, just send Chief an email. He's asked right now, he's getting innovative calls because I took up a job.
No, there is, I don't know. I mean, instead of writing, instead of Chief, just because I know it's saturated.
Yeah.
Right now, it's kind of...
I do have to say, for all the cheese and everybody that's been involved in this, the timeframe of what you guys have put this together is very impressive.
Yeah, there's got to be some, there's got to be some issues, you know, there is, there has to be. They've already got the vehicles, everything's in place. Backtrack, it's static up for that side of the counter on March 1st, because they've got some towns...
That side of the county?
Yeah, that side, it's not out of what I call the original 13.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. There's some towns out that way, I consider a bunch of it.
Yeah.
It happened, it's a really good time, I think, because they had a trinity, you know, it was just pulled up.
In the transition, I think it's about the 21st?
21st, on March 24. 13 in the afternoon, but they're going to actually run it out at 8 a.m. on March 1st.
But they're having an immediate event on the 21st, is it not?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
Excellent.
Any other... Yeah, I'll get that to you. Any other questions or comments about the intercept services? All right, Queen Court proposal, what were you doing that? We have bids in? We do.
You had that one.
We have one bid in.
I think you were all about that.
Yeah, I'm going to suggest, not that I necessarily want to do this, but you know, if that's going to be a longer-term issue, I'll suggest that we pump that, and no offense, but I'll let whoever's sitting in one of these chairs in YouTube take care of that. That'll lead to a bid.
Can I have your question, bud?
Yes, you can ask.
We don't know what's planned.
Oh, okay, not a problem. So as you guys are aware, the way the lot lines are supposed to be down there, right? But you know as well, lots of questions exist. Where, how wide is the road at the end? Kent's porch, where does it go? So we're going to get, presumably, we're going to get a surveyor, and somebody to go, basically do all the lot lines along the road, and not only identify where they are now, but make recommendations to the town as to, you probably want to consider adjusting this lot line, right? And I'll use Kent's porch as an example, right? It is, I get it, maybe the lot line is going through Kent's porch.
The line should not.
But, but it... The town can basically agree to a lot line adjustment and say, okay, we're going to move it closer to the road, et cetera, et cetera. So this is to hire somebody to basically do that, make recommendations to the town, which the town will then have to consider adjusting those lot lines, and they'll have to be able to the town to do it.
What you were saying about Kent's porch, my monitors from my survey is arriving in my driveway, reading where I park my keys.
Yep.
And, you know, the thing is, I thought you were saying, why don't we...
We came in with lawyers, dealt with Bill and Law. What they agreed was by insurance control minutes, was the road is where the road is. That's exactly what was said, that's what we've been told. We have not been stressing over it because we were told that nothing's going to change. If it does change, potentially means we cannot park our vehicles. If you're thinking you park there for 40 years.
If anything, I'm telling you right now, if anything, it would be moving the lot lines to match the road as opposed to being in your driveway. Okay? Or, again, the lot line through Kent's porch. The purpose of this is to actually, to some extent, finalize because there are gray areas about where those lot lines are and what the deeds said. The deeds don't necessarily match where the survey markers are, et cetera, et cetera.
And the only reason the road was paved. And you might know, I'm in there for 42 years in September, and the road was put in, paved, not the road was paved. And I had pictures, I just can't find it, of how wide the road was with all the deed work giving it to the town and all that. And then when they put in the water and sewer, it was all mud. So the people that lived in my house then, with only a couple ones in front of my yard, their cars all sunk to the doors, and they had to have them towed. So that's why the town ended up paving the road the way it is. It's never been touched since, and it's falling apart like crazy right now, I'm sure you know.
No, and again, this is to, I think, resolve a lot of these issues. And the idea is not to, you know, screw your parking, that's not the purpose of this. The idea is to basically fix this and be able to definitively have the records that basically delineate, and as I said, if we have to adjust some lot lines, the town is amenable to considering that. I'm not going to say yes or no, but it will be a discussion where, you know, and we'll have a surveyor come in and say, look, I recommend you do this and this. This takes care of this issue. Everybody will hear about it, and then it'll have to go on warrants for the town to vote on if we decide to move.
Okay. And our concern isn't just our property, the three of us of our back road, our neighbors, our two neighbors are away right now. We're concerned for them too.
Oh, and Kent has come in on numerous...
Yeah, I thought it was saying, Billy, that law.
But Lisa Truescale?
She was working.
Yes, so she was able to come to the... None of us knew anything going on, so I think that's enough of hers. We just don't know. Someone sent us the agenda and said, maybe it should be...
With all of this, all of these years that I've been dealing with Bill and Law, about 18 years now, 19, everything seems to be like, you don't hear anything about it until it's going to happen, or we have to come to a meeting. It's almost like that with them. But, I mean, everything else in town you hear about. It's always such, and nobody, and I may completely know, except for the new person that lives in Gustav Lake's old house, and Lisa, and us, and Kent.
Yep.
No, that's...
No one knows.
No, no, understood. And Kent has talked to several meetings and talked about this, and Kent was really the instigator to basically...
Right, he had totally...
It's probably a bit, it's more of a...
Okay, so we knew he had been talking. Another...
And that all comes down to the road agent and the paving schedule and everything.
We just needed to mention.
No, no, that's, right, change the shot when you get it, right.
Well, people don't drive this fast when they're going to fall.
I remember way back when this all started with the meeting, the road limit was 25. We have two kids, and a dog, and we have Lisa with her dog and everything, we try to keep them in the ass, but those kids, you know, these cars were coming down like crazy, and on Sunday, five cars came down within half an hour of each other and all just went down to the field, to the beginning of the field, back out, either back in Kent's driveway into block or back all the way out of the road. So there's a lot of issues with the cars, you know.
We don't, we don't.
And they can hear it.
Well, anyway, so that's, that's what's going on. Hopefully, it may be addressed this year, you know, like I said, we'd have to go with the town to formally do anything, but keep your eye out in terms of what the board may be, may be doing in the future.
Okay, appreciate that.
No problem. All right. Prior meeting minutes. So we have two sets, one for our meeting on Tuesday, February 11th, let's start with that one. Any questions, comments or edits on February 11th's minutes? I don't have any. I'll move the minutes for February 11th, 2025, Ezra. Second by Hobi, all in favor? Aye. And then the other one was a deliberative session, hopefully you, you know, had a pick or two, you need to, the deliberative session, that was quite long.
Yes, I can check, see if I have any ideas.
I do, I do. Not, not many, I think, no.
No, I'm good.
You're good? I'll move the minutes for deliberative session, which took place on February 4th, 2025. Ezra?
Sorry.
Second by Hobi, all in favor? Aye. Excellent. I think that's it. Any other business? Anybody have?
There are any.
You're good? You're good?
I'm good.
Anything?
(Inaudible).
Was that? The noise ARP, so we had, the preliminary meeting took place several weeks ago, allowing bidders to ask questions. Bids are due this Friday, so that's where that sits.
And this is your last meeting?
Uh, no, we have one more meeting next week. The fifth?
Fourth.
I think it's the fourth. Yeah, we have one meeting on the fourth before the elections. We'll talk a little bit about transition, just so everyone's on the same page with you guys. That, anything else?
Aye. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn from Hobi, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. I'll say it next. Great, thank you, guys.
(Inaudible).
There's been a ceremony, a ceremony. This is for you. So did you want to serve us in the spring?
Yeah.
Great. You'll get it.
I will.
Thanks for coming. No, don't worry about it. Don't worry about it. It's really nice.
Yeah.
Kelly's office is really a drop. I missed 2:30. Hopefully it's on camera. I'm talking to the guy and Hobi is off in your back.